All to today's committee hearing is the Rules Committee. My name is Herb Wesson. I'm the Chair of this committee. I'm joined today by my dear friend and colleague Marquis Harris Dawson. I hope to have a very informative and interesting conversation today. We've got a couple of things that I want to do. We're going to take as much general public comment as we can, but I do want to get a report from one of the departments or from, was it H R? And I think, Mr. Harris Dawson, if it's okay with you, why don't we start off with a report from the Human Relations Committee? How did we get to this point?
Mr. Chair, would you like the item read into the record?
Well, you know what? Let me follow instructions. He keeps me from getting, don't go anywhere. Yes, I would like the item read into the record.
Item number one is a joint Los Angeles Housing and Community Investment Department and Human Relations Commission report and City Administrative Officer Two report relative to the historical importance and cultural impact of establishing Indigenous Peoples' Day as a legal city holiday.
Thank you. Good to see you, my friend.
Good to see you.
I'm just going to let you, you free will here.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, and thank you for holding this hearing. Appreciate the time and the energy that you're giving this issue. The Human Relations Commission was asked to participate in a process that brought together various stakeholders on the issue of creating an Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday. And in our effort to create an equitable and inclusive process, we reached out to as many folks who this issue was very close to, who had not only vested interest in seeing it come through, but also understood the historical context of the issue. And so, we had not only one-on-one meetings with several folks who then sort of delineated their issues, but we met with folks who also were thinking there was a position against it. What we initially, as a Human Relations Commission representative, we put together a report that outlined not only all those concerns, but also gave contextual, it put the issue in the context where which the city could begin to explore its various possibilities. We know that the report had some limitations and there was not a full report that I think, one of the things that we really wanted to look at was what other municipalities throughout the country were thinking about this issue and what other municipalities had taken action on this issue. So, in our report, we outlined some of those municipalities. In the interest of being more clear, we did look at not only what other municipalities had done in the last few years, as early as, say, 1992 in Berkeley, but we started really looking at, post the report, at other options as to sort of what we would do, what the options were in terms of creating or replacing a holiday. And as you know, when you're charged in creating a holiday, the big challenge of creating a holiday is the fiscal and financial impact to the city. And so, given the challenges there, the natural assumption was then to really move to a replacement strategy, right? What other holiday is in place now that could be replaced with Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday? And so, given those circumstances, I think a lot of people we talked to gave us the feedback that in fact they wanted Columbus Day to be that holiday that was replaced with Indigenous Peoples' Day. So, in lieu of all the conversations we had, I think, in our reporting, you know, we wish in retrospect that we would have had more options given at the end, meaning some municipalities celebrate both, right? Some municipalities have come to an understanding that they are going to celebrate both almost on the same day, right? Other municipalities have sort of come up with different sort of alternative ways to deal with not doing away completely with Columbus Day, but keeping some sort of that spirit of Columbus still, right? But in large, let me just tell you, when we speak to Native American Angelino stakeholders, they are very adamant about replacement. They're very adamant about creating an Indigenous Peoples' Day holiday that really restores to a lot of folks the historical injustices that were done to Indigenous peoples by the conquest, by colonialism, by the presence of European Americans here in the region. And so, Columbus represents that to a lot of folks, and so they were very, very clear and articulated those ideas very clearly. The one opportunity that we had, sir, to bring both groups together back in July 27th of this year, was an opportunity where we got together, we tried to bring folks together to articulate those very issues. There was confusion, I must admit, and the way maybe we facilitated that meeting wasn't the best, but I felt that the voices of both groups were heard loud and clear. Folks from the Italian-American community came out and expressed a lot of support for keeping Columbus Day as a way to keep identity alive for Italian-Americans. And they felt that that connection to Columbus Day was a way to continue to celebrate that presence and the contribution of Italian-Americans to the city of Los Angeles. But we did have emotional and very articulated and very intellectual conversations about the reasons why we should do away with Columbus Day from the Indigenous population, local stakeholders. And they were giving ideas as to how to move forward on this, how to, I think that both groups, sir, and I want to make this very clear, both groups of stakeholders want to create Indigenous Peoples' Day celebration, and that's not the issue. The issue then becomes replacement versus, you know, and then how that replacement or how that looks as we move forward. So, that is in general, there was a small survey that was informal that we did also that, you know, collected 129 responses on that, that, like I said to you, there were numerous letters of support that I have, that we have handy to give to all the committee members, both on both sides, that outline exactly the concerns and the issues moving forward. That's, that's-
Well, let me say this before I turn it over to Mr. Harris Dawson. First, I want to thank you and the Human Relations Commission for all your hard work.
Thank you, sir.
Dealing with a very challenging issue.
Yes.
So, I know that it was a balancing act on your part, and I just want to say that I appreciate all the work that you and the rest of the staff put into this. And we do have more time.
Yes.
Now that we're, we've taken this, I don't want to say to a higher level, but a different level.
Yes.
Now that it's being heard in this committee, so there will be opportunities for you guys to provide additional information to this committee and what have you. So, I think that you got everything started, you did a great job, and know that we, any additional information that you get, that this committee would definitely look forward to seeing it.
Thank you so much, and we will have more information in terms of other municipalities. That's really our research right now.
And that, we'd like to see how they're dealing with that. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and thank you so much for this report. I am very proud of what you all have done. This is just the kind of issue and just the kind of process that I think was envisioned when the Human Relations Commission was put in place, and you guys have done a stellar job with this process, and I look forward to working with you going forward on it. Question I have, just pure curiosity on my part, there's no reason why you would have looked into this, but I'm just curious to hear if you did. So, there are other countries in the Americas besides the United States, there's actually a country called Colombia, but there's Cuba, there's Puerto Rico, there's lots of other countries. Did you, in your research, come across how they've dealt with this issue, if at all?
You know, I think it's, formally, no, right? Informally, yes. I think that that's a good question that you're asking about how, not only, not only is the United States dealing with the legacy of the first, of the Aboriginal people that lived here, but I think that if you look across North America and South America, you do begin to see examples of what's going on and what could be done, including in Canada, including if you look down south to our neighbors in the south. I think of countries like Guatemala, that have a tremendous presence of Indigenous peoples, and how a lot of conflict has arisen from that, but also a lot of solutions. And so, we are looking, you know, a council member, at other countries, like you said, there's a country, Colombia, I think all of South America has tremendous, Peru has a tremendous Indigenous presence, Mexico has tremendous presence of Indigenous peoples, and how they're dealing also with their rights. So, I think that if you allow us, as we move forward, we could make those connections also, and then there is the Declaration of Indigenous Rights that's now before the United Nations, as a way to talk about Indigenous peoples, not only in the Americas, but throughout the world. So, that component, there's an international component to this work that you're bringing up, that we should be paying attention to, and so I think that we will include some of those comments and any report, and any reporting that we do further. So, thank you for bringing that up.
No, no, thank you, and that was a great, great question, Marquis. So, help us by getting some additional data.
Yes.
We want to be as thorough, as fair, open, transparent as we can during this process.
And I appreciate you saying that, that's really important to this process.
No, it is, and hopefully you can stick around a minute, just in case we do have another-
Absolutely, I'll be here.
All right.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Sir, I'm sorry, my name is Francisco Ortega, and I work for the Housing and Community Investment Department under the Commissions and Community Engagement Division.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to take three public comments at this point, then I, three or four, and then we have some folk here that are going to participate, you know, kind of give us reasons why they think, or how we should proceed, individuals from different camps. So, I'd like to call up Hudson Tibbetts, as is Sherry Thomas, and is it Lisa, Lisa Contreras? Please come forward. Identify yourself, don't wait, just come on up. Yes?
Good morning, my name is Hudson Tibbetts. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Council for providing me the opportunity to speak publicly today. I was born on October 12th, Columbus Day, 1956, right here in Los Angeles. I'm a nurse and administrator at LACUSE Medical Center, as well as the Chair of the City of Angels Two Spirits Society, a social organization of LGBTQ Native Americans. My lineage includes Eastern Cherokee through my father, and Lenape-Nanticoke through my mother, in addition to English, tracing back to the 1690s. As a child in Los Angeles, I learned in school that Christopher Columbus discovered America, a new world of virgin wilderness waiting to be civilized. At home, I learned that my Native ancestors had been here since time began, and created civilized societies with complex political and cultural structures. As the first people, we had institutionalized learning, and were intimately tied to our Native religion. What was not taught to me in school with transparency was Columbus's agenda to pillage the land and natural resources, to use arms and religions as tools of subjugation for the purpose of enslaving and destroying Native societies. My opinion of Christopher Columbus is one of a disoriented opportunist. I am not here today to denigrate peoples of Italian heritage or Catholicism. On the contrary, Italian-Americans have contributed in a positive way to virtually all areas of contemporary American life and culture, and Catholics long ago introduced an enduring religion practiced by almost 25% of our nation, and has celebrated with well-established holidays.
You're going to have to wrap it up, Mr. Tibbetts.
My purpose here today is to respectfully request your assistance in righting a longstanding wrong. Please help us rename Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day in the inclusive effort to commemorate and recognize all Native people who share and love this land with all Americans.
Thank you. So, what I'm going to do, everybody gets a minute, but I don't want to cut you off, so let's just be sensitive to everybody's time, and I want to hear your full thoughts. So, please come forward, identify yourself, and begin.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak, Sherry Thomas, L.A. Native American Indian Commission. Observing Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October would be important to the peoples of North, South, and Central America as a reaffirmation that we already inhabited these lands, and were not merely discovered by European explorers. We have rich and vibrant cultures that stretch from Alaska to the Yucatán Peninsula to Tierra del Fuego. Statements that we had no written language, history, or literature without Columbus are an insult to the thousands of years of written and oral history, rituals and traditions that are still passed down through the generations by our elders. We are thankful to those in the Italian community who support Indigenous Peoples' Days, and all who have added their voices to this difficult conversation. The anger and disappointment at the disagreement caused by Columbus Day is understandable. However, after learning about more Italian culture from Pietro Camilla Native-
No, just come on.
And recently departed family friend Joseph Perfetti, I think it would be an amazing opportunity for Los Angeles to go beyond honoring one individual on one particular day. October could be declared Italian-American Heritage Month. It doesn't have to just be about Columbus, it could be about the entire Italian community. In spite of community differences raised by this issue, the city and county of Los Angeles continue to exhibit commendable leadership in the celebration of diversity. Se cual enox nani.
Thank you. So, if I could have the next speaker, Ms. Contreras?
Yes, good morning, my name is Lisa Contreras. I am a parent of two students at Anahuacalmequek International Preparatory High School, and I'm here to ask you to abolish Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day, as it is recognized in many other countries around the world, and thank you for the question that you asked, and I hope that that is a part of the future reporting. I have always instilled in my children to speak the truth and to seek the truth. They are fortunately at a school where they are also learning the truth, and I hope that you look at the truths of history, and that you all look into it as the people that are reporting back to you, but we all need to look into it personally. So, I'm here to thank you for the time that you have put forth on this matter, and hope that you abolish Columbus Day and make our children be proud of who they are and where they come from. Thank you.
No, thank you. Okay, so what I want to do, I'm going to go four more cards. I'm going to go Ansel Rodriguez, Joseph Galbraith, James Larson, and Robert Rubin. So, please come forward if I call your name. Ansel?
Thank you, Chair, and members, well, did I start?
Go right ahead.
Well, my slave name is Ansel Rodriguez, but I am Kistok Ashkwatli. I am a Chicanawa with my Indigenous ties coming from Mexico. According to historians such as Howard Zinn, Christopher Columbus's expeditions initiated the oppression, murder, rape, and trauma that has affected my family and nations for 524 years, not just here in Los Angeles, but all over the Americas. The removal of Christopher Columbus Day and establishment of Indigenous Peoples' Day in a community like Los Angeles with around half a million Indigenous youth would be a step towards reconciliation with us, the Indigenous peoples of this land. That is why we need to abolish a day that represents the atrocities that happened to our people, and move forward with a day that embraces our people and encourages our youth to look towards our future with hope. So, thank you.
No, thank you. So, if I could have, please come forward, sir, and identify yourself.
Hi, I'm James Larson. I am President of the Southern California Chapter of the Knights of Columbus.
Welcome.
And while I support Indigenous Peoples' Day for the city of Los Angeles, I am opposed to eliminating Columbus Day. I think that there's a rewriting of history of Christopher Columbus, and as someone else had stated, that when they were a child, they learned, they were taught that he discovered America. I was taught that he had a theory that the world was round, that he could get east by going west, and he had no intention of finding America, but he was looking for Asia, which Marco Polo had found a land route to, and the Portuguese had found a mariner route by going around the Cape of Good Hope in Africa. So, he was, he was very innovative in his approach, that you could go west to end up east. And it's that spirit of innovation, and that bravery, and that being an explorer, and going with your ideas that were not the norm at the time, that changed the world as we know it. And that's why I think he should still be recognized. I have other people that are going to talk about the Knights of Columbus and what good work we do under his name, but thanks, so thank you.
Thank you, so, yes, sir, please identify yourself.
Joseph Galbraith, gentlemen. I'm here today to ask you to keep Columbus Day. He was an explorer, he had many downfalls, but he made discoveries to bring many things from Europe, to let Europe know that we're here. Yes, he did do bad things, but we should not lose that day, add to it, and honor the Indigenous people here. As for me, right here, I'm Chumash. My great-grandfather was raised on the San Fernando mission. My father, being Galbraith, was Scotch English from Costa Noa, from Monterey, and I speak for myself, for my grandparents, and for my generations from the past. Please honor us as we will honor you and the Europeans that have, that found this, even with the downfalls that they did, and many explorers did do many good things, unfortunately at the time did many bad things. It's unfortunate. Thank you.
Thank you for coming, sir. Yes, please come and identify yourself.
Good morning, honorable city leaders. My name is Robert Rubio. I'm the Vice President of the Southern California Chapter of Knights of Columbus. We have 77 councils in our chapter, ranging from Semin Valley and many here in the heart of Los Angeles, all around this particular area. What I'd like to just share with you, that we are a group of inclusion. As for myself, I have heritage with the Yaki tribe that roamed Southern Arizona, Northern Sonora, Mexico, and attend a variety of powwows and gatherings, and today's society, we're included. With the Knights of Columbus here in Los Angeles, we have the Marian Possession, we have the One Life L.A. Possession, the One Life L.A. in January, 10,000 folks come and participate in the dignity of life, and we lead that. We're primarily all Catholic men with our families, but we have a community behind us. We are opening many councils, Spanish-speaking councils, that from Mexico, very strong, and also the Knights of Columbus and in the Philippines. So, I oppose eliminating the Knights of Columbus Day, and I do respect the Indigenous Day, and hope that you can find another day, and those are my comments. Thank you very much.
No, thank you. So, to all the people that have already spoken, again, thank you for coming down and sharing your views, and I'm going to get to the rest to the best of my ability later, but we have some folk that we invited to come down, speak as a panel, if you will, and if I could get those folk to come forward, and we'll, what's the best way to get up here? This way, or? Yeah, either way, and then you guys will, just want to make sure I have enough chairs for everyone. We'll go down to the end? Yep. And Marcos, you know, here's an empty seat over here, and then everybody can just... Okay, let me thank everybody for coming, and I think the best way to start this is, I'm going to, Marcos, I'm going to start with you, have you introduce yourself, what, you know, affiliation or two, and then we'll go around this horseshoe, starting with you. Oh, press the button, make sure that green light is on.
Good morning, brothers and sisters, my name is Marcos Aguilar. I'm Azteca Mexicano, Executive Director of Semillas Sociedad Civil, Semillas Community Schools, and co-director of our school, Anahuacalmequek International University Preparatory of North America. We're the only Indigenous Peoples' School in the county of Los Angeles, and look forward to seeing a new day for our children to be recognized. Thank you.
Okay, and you don't have to keep your finger on it.
Oh, okay.
Just press it once, and the light comes on, you're good.
All right.
Okay, so let's go to my right, yes, sir? Did you press your?
I did, no.
Okay, you're good.
Thank you for the instructions. Good morning, Honorable Chair, Councilmember, my name is Sunny Santinez, and I'm the State Deputy of the California Knights of Columbus.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Chrissy Castro. I am a citizen of the Navajo Nation. I am Mexican clan, born for the one who walks around clan. I'm the Vice Chair of the L.A. City-County Indian Commission, and I'm also a lifelong resident of CD-1.
Hello, I'm Gloria Arianas. I am Tongba, and I'm an elder of the tribe, and I'm glad to be here today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, yes.
Good morning, my name, my name is Anne Potenza, and I'm the President of Federated Italo-Americans, which is an umbrella organization for 130 Italian and Italian-American organizations in Southern California. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Rudyard Ortega, hello, my name is Rudyard Ortega. I'm the Chairman of the Indian Commission of Los Angeles, and also I'm the tribal president for the Fernando de Umtitavía and Banda Mission Indians.
Okay, you know what I think, what I want to do here, is I want to hear from, I want to save the Indigenous People conversation to the second part. So, I want to start out with you guys, and just hear, I mean, you know the issue that's before us, and I just want to hear your thoughts, I don't want to guide anybody in any direction, but we'll start, Anne, why don't we start with you?
Okay.
You know, why are you here, and what is it that you feel compelled to say?
Absolutely, thank you for being here. I know many faces, we've all been here for this, I wanted to be the first to say, it is true that as a representative of the Italian-American community, we do support an Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the only reason we are here is to make it known that there are important reasons why we also want to celebrate Columbus Day. So, we had hoped to explore reasons. I know that there are many, having come to like over a dozen meetings over the course of the past year, and only having two minutes to speak, I've had to do pieces of little bits of the reasons, but what I would like to talk about today is the reason why Columbus Day was made a holiday in America, because I know a lot of people have spoken and are knowledgeable about the other things and the pros and cons, but if I may, I would like to read-
Go right ahead.
Why it is something that's important today?
Yeah, this is a freewheeling conversation.
Thank you, so I'd like to concentrate on this. Columbus's journey was the birth of immigration, which brought all different immigrants, including Italian-Americans, to the New World. I know when we talked about the Human Relations Committee, it said primarily about the Italian-Americans, and I've always been vocal, although I represent the Italian-Americans, we have always said it's not just our holiday, it does belong to all, all Americans that have come from an immigration from the European continent, and when we talk about Columbus being the birth of immigration, it's his journey here that later brought the Europeans and the people that now make up not just the Italian-Americans, but also the Polish-Americans, the Irish-Americans, the Slavs, the Jewish-Americans, I mean, basically our immigrant community, and now with today, it being completely relevant again with the new great group of immigrants that are coming here now. I mean, it's right here, our own mayor has spoken about it, and Los Angeles is very proud to welcome immigrants. So, what started over 100 years ago, because they made Columbus the hero for the Italian-Americans at a time when the Italian-Americans- Italian-Americans at a time when the Italian-Americans first came over, and it was a time when we were being persecuted. We were the brown people. We were the ones that were less than. We were the ones that were taking the jobs that the Protestants that were here before us didn't want. And it was at that time when the government and they decided to recognize that, yes, immigrants have built what we know as America, the government that we stand in, not to take away that there weren't people here before, but there's a contribution of people who come from other lands. And as we bring our traditions, our culture, our good, our bad, the bad being things that are part of the accusations towards Columbus when we talk about the genocide and we talk about the spread of disease. I hardly think that the germ warfare was something that Columbus brought over five hundred years ago to kill the natives here. That's something that, if you look at the history books and you look at that, that was not part of the reason, as said earlier by one of our presidents of Columbus. So what we would like to do is to go back to why was this even established as a day? Why are all of our holidays important? It primarily is because of that time and period over a hundred years ago when we needed a hero, when the country needed to recognize that immigrants were important. And it's at that time, the end of the eighteen hundreds, beginning of the nineteen hundreds, when the growth of our country changed rapidly and the largest influx of immigrants came at that time. And I just would like somehow, I think we could use this as a day, not to get rid of history or the pros or the cons, but I think it's a day that we could actually use it. It's not just for the Italian-Americans. Columbus represents bringing the old world to the new world. This was our new world. And I think it's a time that as we welcome the immigrants that are coming from their old worlds for the reasons and bringing them here, I think we need to find a way to welcome them and to make them proud of their heritage. And I think we can do that by also celebrating the people who were here before and gave us a place and the indigenous people. So I do think that they're two separate things, and they've now unfairly been lumped into one, because when I come here and I stand here and I want Columbus Day to stay intact, I am looked at as if I don't want the indigenous people recognized. And that is not on behalf of all the people, the groups I recognize. That is not the intent. And when we bring up other days that have been recognized on a national scale, because I've brought up before that in the state of California, that the Fourth Friday of September is already recognized as Native American Day, that in the country, under President Bush, they recognized the day after Thanksgiving as a recognized holiday for the Native American cultures as well. So when we've brought up days financially, that the day after Thanksgiving being a day that is already a paid holiday, that is not assigned to anything, it's already been recognized since two thousand and eight for Native cultures, that's not really been embraced or considered. If it's a matter of money, I, I don't think it's my right, but I don't think it's a matter of saying Columbus Day has to be a paid holiday. We just don't want it to be erased. So if it's a matter of money, I think we should discuss that and discuss maybe that debate. If Indigenous Peoples' Day becomes the Fourth Friday of September, then maybe that is the paid holiday for our city, and maybe Columbus Day on the Second Monday of October isn't. So thank you. That's what I would like to contribute today. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We're gonna go to you.
Honorable Chair, Councilmembers, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak before you. Let me just read a kind of a short statement on behalf of the Knights of Columbus. The Knights of Columbus believe that the Second Monday in October should continue to be celebrated as Columbus Day. We strongly oppose any efforts to abolish or diminish this holiday. Not only are such efforts unfair to Columbus himself, but they are usefully based on blatant distortions and misunderstandings of the historical record. They are also unfair to those who celebrate this holiday. Advocating the addition of a new holiday is one thing, but it's something else altogether to levy for the diminishment or elimination of an already well-established holiday that is celebrated by Americans year after year, and as polling has shown, is supported by the majority of them. Columbus was a man ahead of his time, a fearless explorer and brilliant navigator. His daring voyage changed the course of history. The legacy and accomplishments of Christopher Columbus deserve to be celebrated, and most Americans and Californians agree. By more than two to one, most Americans, sixty-two percent, express a favorable opinion of Columbus himself. Only twenty-nine percent view him unfavorably. Longtime Stanford-
What was that again? What did you just say?
I said-
I missed that.
Okay. By almost two, by more than two to one, most Americans, sixty-two percent, expressed a favorable opinion of Columbus himself. Only twenty-nine percent view him unfavorably.
I got you.
Longtime Stanford University professor Carol Delaney has debunked many of the negative myths about Columbus through extensive research. She paints a positive portrait of a man who generally began benign relations with Native Americans and has been unfairly blamed for everything that ever went wrong in the New World after his arrival. Professor Delaney explained in an interview that Columbus strictly told his crew not to do things like maraud or rape, and instead to treat the native people with respect. There are many examples in his writings where he gave instructions to this effect. Most of the time when injustice occurred, Columbus wasn't even there. There are terrible diseases that got communicated to the natives, but he can't be blamed for that, as Anne mentioned earlier. Delaney further explained in her book on Columbus that he is blamed for all the calamities that befell the New World. The presentist perspective that dominates the contemporary view, even among some academics, holds him responsible for consequences he did not intend, expect, or endorse. Columbus Day has special meaning, including to many Italian-Americans and Catholics. And efforts to repeal, diminish, or replace Columbus Day are divisive, as well unfair and hurtful to those communities regardless of what substitutions are offered. It's also important to note that President Obama, just this year, echoed President Clinton's sentiments, explaining the spirit of exploration that Columbus embodied was sustained by all who would follow him westward, driving a desire to continue expanding our understanding of the world. More than five centuries ago, one journey changed the trajectory of our world, and today we recognize the spirit of Christopher Columbus's legacy inspired. Columbus Day is a holiday for all Americans. It is an opportunity to celebrate the legacy of Christopher Columbus, which in part led to the formation of our shared country. Just recently, the city of Baltimore rejected efforts to abolish Columbus Day, and I'd be glad to share those information with you.
Please.
So without hesitation, the Knights of Columbus continue to celebrate Christopher Columbus's legacy, both on the day set aside to honor his accomplishments and throughout the year. And we invite and encourage all Americans to join us. Also, it's important to note that here in California, as Anne already alluded to, we already have an official holiday, state holiday, to honor indigenous people. This holiday reflects the considered adjustment over thirty-four years and three separate state governors on how to honor an important constituency. So we're here to also celebrate indigenous people, but we urge you not at the expense of Christopher Columbus. In nineteen sixty-eight, Governor René Reagan signed a resolution calling for a holiday, which was called then American Indian Day, on the Fourth Friday in September. In nineteen ninety-eight, the California Assembly passed AB nineteen fifty-three, which changed the name of the holiday to Native American Day, also to be observed on the Fourth Friday in September, but the governor still has to proclaim the observance every year. Then in two thousand and fourteen, Governor Jerry Brown signed AB, AB one nine seven three, establishing a new permanent state holiday, Native American Day, to no longer require an annual proclamation. So in, in the books of the state of California, the date is already set as the Fourth Friday of September. So we urge you, and we are here as an immigrant, also I'm an immigrant. So Columbus Day is a celebration not only of one man, but a celebration of the exploration of the New World, the celebration of all the immigrants and our contributions to this country. So I'm, I, the main issue here is why are we dividing people by casting indigenous people against Christopher Columbus and the people who support Christopher Columbus? California, especially Los Angeles, is a melting pot. There's a place for everyone. And just like I said earlier, I'm an immigrant, so we welcome immigrants in California, especially in California. We welcome immigrants. So it's a celebration not only of one man, but all the immigrants.
Thank you.
That come to the U.S.
Thank you. Okay, so now before I, I ask you guys to weigh in, I'm gonna, I got a couple of questions. I don't want you to take anything negative by the questions, but I want some hard answers, okay? I've heard both of you say that this is a celebration of all immigrants. I did hear that, right? So would you be favorable to ma- making this an all-immigrants celebration? If that was what the day was called, all-immigrants celebration? No, I mean, that's, that's the holiday, All Immigrants Day. And I'm just-
Sure.
I just wanna get back and forth.
Sure. I mean, on a personal level, I have no problem if we need something to clarify that all immigrants are included. I can't speak on behalf of the hundred and thirty organizations that I represent, the personal feelings as far as changing the official name. So that would be something I would love to explore. If there are suggestions, bring back to the communities that I represent and, and bring back to you.
Okay. And now you?
I would like to explore that, sir, because to me, Columbus is represents immigrants. He's the first immigrant who came to the United States.
Okay, so, I mean, again, what I'm hearing is this is for all immigrants. It's not just for him. That's what I'm hearing from you. Okay, now, I got a question for you. You said that there, there was some survey done, and twenty-nine percent of the people were unsupportive or unfavorable of replacing this holiday or cha-
No, no, unfavorable of Christopher Columbus himself.
Okay, so twenty-nine percent were, and so then that means seventy-one?
Percent are in favor of have a positive.
How did you do this survey and how many people did it?
It was a, it was a survey conducted by Marist Poll. It's a, it's a nationwide poll.
Okay, that's good enough. So I have another question for you. You indicated that there were things that occurred when Christopher Columbus was here, negative things, but that he didn't know about these things or he shouldn't be blamed for these things, I think you said?
Well, it was a research done by Professor Delaney of Stanford.
And-
And based on the research.
And, and the professor said what?
She said, let me, let me say exactly. She said that most of the time when injustice occurred, Columbus wasn't even there.
Okay.
There are terrible diseases that got communicated to the natives, but he can be blamed for that. That's based on his, on the research.
Do you think that a, a, a leader has to be responsible for everything? I'm just, I'm wondering your thoughts on that. I mean, you can't, I mean, it, it, I might not agree with what my men or may have done, but I am their leader, and if they did something that was wrong or inappropriate or murdered or whatever, then I have to be responsible for that. So I'm curious, is the professor excusing him because he did not do it directly, in your opinion?
Well, I, I think it's both. He wasn't personally responsible for those things because those are committed by, by the people that he brought to the New World. But at the same time, I agree with you, there's some leadership responsibility that comes along with it. But I do, we need to admit that when he came here, there was no design, there was no desire, it was not intended to bring disease to America. I mean, the, the, the objective is to explore, explore a new world.
I got you, Anne.
Yeah, I got you.
Got you.
When we, I know a lot of this has changed once Columbus's diaries were discovered and that became part of the education and myself in learning as much as possible, not being a, you know, not that this is my area of expertise. I've become by default, learned as much as I can. And when you start to take apart that he did make four journeys here, he did make four journeys, the first journey, when you actually look at it, he left his man, his men here, and there was no record of the atrocities that we have heard, you know, following. It is true that when you hear from the diaries that when he came back from the first to make the second journey is when he did find his men, the colony that they set up was, they were killed and massacred, you know, on the island of Hispaniola where they did. And that was at the time when there was the, the, the prisoners of war taken from the four of the five Taiyino tribes at that time. There was a fifth Taiyino tribe that was actually there as part of helping the men. So at that point, without being there and not being an expert in history and knowing what are the terms of at that time coming back, finding your men dead, what happens with prisoners of war? To add to that and from what I've learned is when it became the journey of bringing prisoners of war back to Spain, to who ultimately financed this, along with all the other things that were being brought back from the exploration, once the king and queen of Spain said, "We do not want prisoners of war. This is not something that we're looking for," that was abolished and that was not something that continued. So without going into detail, but when you talk about like the, how did this start? What's going on? Did they get off the boats and start war? From both sides, we see it didn't happen. We also know that there were certain things, a lot of the problems with obviously the Span, the Spanish were, the Spanish crown was very interested in bringing Catholicism. That's where obviously the conflict was. If you look at both sides, there are people, you know, you could say that it's terrible that Catholicism was brought here, and then you look to the hundreds of years afterwards when the Spanish conquistadors came and the terrible things. When we're talking about what has followed that has been horrible and if we wanna just put it in the white man in general, like terrible things that we have done to the natives of our country, we, we could take that from then, five hundred years ago, up into the latest thing in North Dakota and personal opinion. So there are horrible things that we have done. We have not honored our treaties. We have not honored things that we have done, and I stand with the indigenous people to say that is not right. But I don't think that you go back, how far back are you gonna take it, that Columbus's purpose and reason for being here and how his journey changed and what came from it is what we are here for. When I touched on the German, the germ warfare, as well as-
Now you're getting a-
Another question?
No, no.
Oh.
Wait, wait.
Yeah.
So just, you get ready to go off?
Okay, okay.
On an, on another tangent, so just-
Sure.
Because basically the question I wanted to get a feel for, if, if you felt the leader should be responsible for the people that he or she leads, and that's primarily what I want, and I don't think we need to get into the germ portion at this point.
And-
So I wanna see if Mr. Harris Dawson has a question or two, and then we're going to, I would, I would like that call on, or however, whatever order you think, Chris. But did you wanna ask a question at this point?
You know, I think the chair asked all the questions that certainly I had. I, you know, I just wanted to take a note, to take a little bit of a timeout, to say, you know, how much I appreciate being an Angelino at a moment like this where we can sit at a table and have a very tough discussion and talk about very painful history, sitting right next to each other and doing it in a respectful way. So I appreciate everybody for that because I know it's, it's very, very difficult. And, you know, this is a tough issue in that, you know, certainly the spirit of exploration, the spirit of innovation, the spirit of sort of finding, you know, I mean, we send space shuttle, we send space aircraft up into space. If we find some people, hopefully we treat them nice, but the, but the spirit of going there, the idea is the same now as it was then, and I think it's right to wanna lift that up. I think that's a good energy. On the other hand, though, there's just all this history of not just here in the Americas, but in Australia and in Africa and in other parts of Asia where the European colonialization brought with it, there's no other way to say it, just forms of genocide. And so the question becomes, you know, how, where do you strike the balance, right? So where do you, where do you- So where do you, um, where do you draw the line about, you know, what we're gonna carry forward and celebrate and what we're gonna say? You know what? We have to turn our back on that. You know, this is not unlike, and I know some people won't like this comparison, this is not unlike the Confederate flag issue in the South. You know, if you, if you have spent any time in the South, you know there are many positive things that happened in the Confederacy, right? There just were. I mean, there was a spirit of community, there was a spirit of agriculture, there were a lot of, but they also had a big problem with slavery. Uh, and so you, um, come to a point where you have to make a tough call about, uh, what you're going to acknowledge and what you're gonna say. You know what? We reject that part of our history and we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. And so, again, I just wanna thank everybody, uh, for being a part of this discussion and recognize the weight of it and how, uh, difficult and, and painful it can be. But, but folks are soldiering on and having it, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Uh, Francisco, you know what I, you don't have to get up. When we meet again, I would like to get a, a report back from your people. And if you need help getting this data, then I'll make sure that the CLA's office is available to, to help you. But I want you to take every recognized holiday in this country and break down the reason for it. The history surrounding it, everyone. And I wanna have that in a document so that I could look at each and every holiday that we celebrate. And if there's, uh, any controversy, I wanna know. If there's not any controversy, I wanna know that as well. But I want a document that does that, okay? So, um, uh, how would you like to, uh, proceed? Okay, well, that's why I asked you, 'cause I was gonna go totally out of the order, okay? So, yeah, but I think you should, again, identify yourself and then go for it.
Uh, my name is Rudy Ortega. I'm the chairman of the Los Angeles City County Indian Commission, also tribal president of the Fernandino Totavía, I'm Van Mission Indians. Um, you know, I have some talking points, but here and everything, I just, I actually wanna talk about today, how Columbus Day affects me today, how it affects my people today. Um, I am, Los Angeles is home to me from ancient times, way before. My ancestors come from the villages of Chaiwunanga, Sitwunanga, uh, Koengavetam, all these people, uh, even Pipi Madam, which is the islands. There's people enrolled in my tribe. We call them Takdam people. Um, and so today, as we talk about that those people migrated, they were pushed to the missions. And by that, we lost a lot of families. In eighteen forty-three, we had forty-one petitioners fighting for lands to preserve lands here in Los Angeles because it was very racist to Indian people all the way to nineteen fifties. Los Angeles here, we had, in Los Angeles, we had Indian slave trade here. Indians were forced to slave on ranches, uh, who came and made Los Angeles their home. They wanted our lands because we had minerals, waters. So my family fought all the ways. My great-grandfather, Antonio Maria Ortega, fought for land rights. And he was pushed off. He was essentially sued, him and six other tribal captains of our community were sued and they lost. They had to pay five hundred dollars. This was eighteen seventy-one. And so they had to pay five hundred dollars, fifty dollars each month that they had the land hostage, according to the courts. So this was from Charles McClay, who came to California, former Senator McClay. Um, so these are all folks, the valley names that you have in San Fernando Valley, Porter, Burbank, all these people took our ancestral lands away. So what it affects us today, how Columbus affects me today, essentially goes beyond that. I see Columbus much like, we're talking about why we made it as a holiday U.S. Well, United States makes errors after our elections. We see it in the news, we see everything. But we have to identify our errors. We have to correct, and that's what this is all about. Identify, willing to learn about history and what Columbus has done and how it affects not only years ago, but today as well, how it still does today. In Los Angeles, we call it a donut hole among the tribal communities because there's no federally recognized tribe here. Why? Because they didn't want Indians in Los Angeles. My great-grandfather, who I spoke about, Antonio Maria, he was one of our speaking, speakers. He passed away in nineteen fifty. If you wanted to go to the beach, you had to get permission from L.A. City. If you wanted to come into downtown, you had to get permission because he lived in that era. You couldn't come into white cities. If you did, you're hung, you're murdered. Who cares? You're Indian. So today, in my tribe, out of the forty families, we're down to five families that can trace their ancestry to these villages. So when we talk about Columbus, we talk about immigration, yes, we're willing to work with everybody. When we look at genealogy, we look at everyone. The course of time, we were crystallized, we had to go through this course. An act of survival, we had to adapt ourselves. We had to change. If not, my ancestors didn't do that, I wouldn't be sitting here today. I wouldn't have an argument about Columbus and his actions. If he's a leader, he has to take actions for everything that occurred by his men or not, or himself. So today, when we're talking about it, we're actually putting Columbus on the stand. He's at trial. And he's at trial for his actions that he incurred. And that's what I look at. So I am still, as my community, fighting for federal acknowledgement. Hardly anybody in Los Angeles knows my tribe exists. We're in the shadows. You call yourself Angelino, I call myself Fernandino from San Fernando. And that's the importance. And same thing to my brothers on the, on the East. We call them Komi Vitam, but they call themselves Tongva. So these are the people who are not immigrants, who are here, the first people. And one of our ancestors, who spoke to one of, a writer in eighteen fifties, wrote, "We Takdam, Awey Homuk," which means, "When all the Indian villages die, we die." And we're almost there, down to five families. So when we look at it, that's what we're seeing, is that the fact that with the ripples of what Columbus has occurred, it could have been done another way. He could have voyaged over here, as many other voyagers has done, the Pacific anglers. There could have been some exchange, but it wasn't done that way. It was done as, "Let's occupy the land, let's occupy the minerals, let's do the change." So the world has changed. And I love living in Los Angeles and we call each other brothers and sisters. And we see the diversity in Los Angeles. But unfortunately, it wasn't caused by a niceties. It wasn't because it was a jour- or an agenda item. We all learned that we don't have to go through it extensively. But essential, what we're looking at is the fact that Columbus is on trial. I'm in agreeance that we move it to Indigenous Peoples' Day. If you wanna go to the middle, the middle states of your, the middle countries that you asked about in Americas, they call it the Day of the People. Columbia, all these different areas, they call it the Day of the People because they don't look at Columbus as a, as a person. But if you're looking at immigration, if you're looking at indigenous people, we're all people and it's the Day of People.
Okay. Let me, let me, let's, uh, Day of the People?
Yeah.
My name is Gloria Ariana Siamatanga. Uh, we are basically the tribe of the Los Angeles Basin, for the Channel Islands, parts of Orange, San Bernardino and Riverside Counties. We have a large area, but it is all occupied. We have never been given, given reservation or designated land. And that's always been a struggle for us because we're not federally recognized. Uh, we are state, state recognized, but it doesn't help our young people going to college and so forth through the BIA. Me personally, I don't want to be a part of the BIA because I have a problem in the quantification of our blood. And that would be the federal government telling me how much I am, who I am and what I am. I know who I am. I have my oral histories from my family. I did my genealogy. And I wanna talk about Los Angeles. The, we were here before this was Los Angeles, before it was the state of California, before it was the United States. We had territories and we respected those as tribal people. And we had no borders. So Canada didn't exist, Mexico didn't exist, or the South American did not exist. So when we say indigenous people, I recognize all indigenous people. And it, not only Native Americans, I'm talking about Afro-Americans that come here, African people, uh, Jamaican people come here, Cuban people come here, a lot of different nationalities come to this state. Los Angeles is known for its diversity.
Yes.
We have little pockets of communities, Chinatown, uh, you know, there's all kinds of these communities. And for me, um, I don't like to look at color, but I love culture. And I think when I see somebody's culture, I wanna learn their culture because it's so rich and it makes people who we are in this city, in this state, uh, in other states, I'm sure, but I've lived here all my life. And I have to tell you a sad story from my mother's perspective. Um, when I was growing up and became aware that people treated me differently, that I was met with racism in high school. And not only that, I'm, I'm very tall, I was very large, very overweight. So I was bullied, what they called bullied in those days. And I was actually, you know, um, it made me kinda tough, you know, fight back. And I've been a fighter all my life. I have been an activist all my entire life in the East L.A. community. And now with my tribe, I returned to my tribe and learned my indigenous culture. But my mother grew up and I asked her one time, 'cause I had visited one of her cousins, and she said, "You're Native American." And I told her, you know, I was very curious about it. And she told me, "I have genealogy." We had an uncle who wrote books back in the twenties. Uh, and he put a lot of history in those books and about family history also in genealogy. And I told her, "So why does your cousin say that?" She goes, "You are not Indian. Don't ever say you are Indian." I didn't understand it. It made me very confused because school was telling me I was American. My father said I was Chicano. And I was very confused, you know, what am I? What am I? You know? I didn't learn until I was in my thirties that I was, could possibly be a Native American. And what I learned in studying so much was that we were punished for being Indian. We were in the missions, we were taken and mixed up and put in holding areas and then they put us out to the missions, made us dress from our neck down to when we had been living in this beautiful comfort and clean air that we had at the time. You know, this beautiful weather that we had here. We didn't require to be dressed from neck, but the Spanish insisted that we dress that way in the missions. They separated the men from the women because the men were more warrior, did not wanna come into the missions. And so we died in large numbers from disease that we did not have, that were bought here. And so when they were baptized, their Indian name was taken away and they were made to have Spanish surnames. What they basically learned was, in order to survive, you had to deny you were Indian because they had been paying the Indians to work in the rancherias and they were paid with alcohol. And with alcohol, you get drunk. On the weekend, you were arrested and you were sold right here on Olvera Street as a slave. That's our history. So my mother denied who she was. She was afraid. It was her way of protecting me as her daughter. And I wish my mother would have lived long enough to know the truth, that we, we are proud of who we are. We have a history, fifteen thousand years B.C., we've been here. That's a long time, okay? Who can discover a thriving civilization? Nobody can be entitled to that. We existed and we welcome people in a peaceful way. All these colonizers, they came and, uh, they killed us, they raped us, they gave us disease. They made us live a different culture. We were forbidden to speak our language, we were forbidden to dress in our regalia, we were forbidden to do ceremony. And we had to do those undergrounds. Some people ran away to the mountains. My uncle, who wrote the books, he ran away to, uh, Bakersfield and he became a horseman, a vaquero. And, um, you know, it's a very painful history that we have. So we carry cultural trauma. And so when we hear things like this, it's very upsetting sometimes because you know what you struggled through as a person and what your mother and your father struggled to become who they were, hardworking people wanting to survive, wanting to do the best they could in this world. And, um, you know, um, we have a beautiful, rich history here. Fortunately, we're finding pieces of it. It was almost taken away completely. We have found a lot. I'm very proud of my people that we now have ceremonies, what we can find that belongs to us, language, what we can find that is ours. And we go back to our regalia and our traditional ways and we're learning all these things. And we are thriving once again and we're a very beautiful, proud people, as are all indigenous people. So I would encourage you to look at those points. And hopefully this will be either what was suggested, uh, Peoples' Day or Indigenous Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Is your light on?
Thank you. I appreciate the, the free dialogue nature of this, but I have some prepared comments I'd like to share.
Now, go, go right ahead.
Make sure that we do that. And once again, my name is Marcos Aguilar, Witsilisli Kwautsin, Azteca Mexicano, here representing Anahuacalmeque, Indigenous Peoples' Community-Based Autonomous Charter School in Los Angeles, located in Nicanchanekke, Gabrielino Tongva Territory, now known as, as Los Angeles, formerly Otsugna. We first want to applaud the members of this committee and the president of the Los Angeles City Council for addressing the valid concerns of indigenous peoples and joining the international community's recognition of the urgency of ending all forms of racial discrimination. Indigenous peoples have called for this recognition and redress internationally. And it is only fitting and timely that Los Angeles, as a city with global impact, respond positively to end all forms of discrimination against indigenous peoples here and across the country. And I wanna emphasize the term indigenous peoples and not what others have raised today of American Indian and Native American, although those, those nations have been recognized. I do not think there is a holiday in Los Angeles or in the country that recognizes indigenous peoples. That is to say that it recognizes indigenous nations and communities in Los Angeles, in this, in the United States, that come from other parts of the world, be it Africa, be it, uh, Australia, be it Maori territory in New Zealand, be it Canada, be it anywhere in the world that indigenous peoples continue to thrive. In particular, we call upon this committee to recognize the implicitly racist nature of the continued celebration of Columbus Day as a holiday, a paid holiday, memorializing the invasion, the continent, of the continents now known as North and South America and the ongoing systemic and systematic genocide perpetrated against indigenous peoples in the name of the doctrine of discovery to this day. Today, we seek truth and reconciliation around the legacy of Cristobal Colon, Columbus, the documented, undying, undeniable historical truth about this man is that he was a plunderer, a colonizer, a slave trader, a sex trafficker, and the all-powerful governing spearhead to the near extinction of the Taino peoples in the lands he landed on, who confronted him peacefully upon his arrival until his arrest by his own sovereign. These crimes against humanity were wrong then and they are wrong today. In light of the truth, of the seeking of truth and towards reconciliation, we'd like to recall, I won't read it all, I'll give you printed statements also, but I'd like to recall the nineteen sixty-five United Nations Declaration on the Elimination of All Forms of Racial Discrimination, which defines the term of racial discrimination, to which the holiday of celebrating Columbus Day and that legacy of colonization and genocide fits perfectly. I'd like to also recognize that the legislature of the state of California adopted the United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples through Assembly Joint Resolution Number Forty-two, which calls for increased awareness, sensitivity and respect for the sovereignty of Native Americans and indigenous peoples. And in there also affirms that the doctrine of discovery emanating from the European colonization after fourteen ninety-two of the continents later to be known as Americas, this is their language, has had profound and lasting negative effects on the cultures and populations of the indigenous peoples and nations of the Americas. We call upon the city of Los Angeles to end the government-sponsored and funded celebration of Columbus Day as a representation of the European colonization of the Americas, the genocide of indigenous peoples and the illegal expropriation of the lands and liberties of sovereign peoples through illegitimate acts of war predicated upon the doctrine of discovery, the Monroe Doctrine later, and countless other illicit legal, illegal constructs. Um, and lastly, uh, the official recognition of the living and ancestral indigenous peoples who represent important communities in the city of Los Angeles, including Mayans, Sapotecas from Oaxaca, Mayans from Guatemala, Yucatan, Central America, Lenca, Pípiles, Nahuas, innumerable indigenous communities in Los Angeles today that will be recognized through the establishment of Indigenous Peoples' Day in October, on October twelfth, as an official city holiday and would advance internationally reaffirmed calls to recognize the value and diversity of the cultures and forms of social organization of the world's indigenous peoples in our city home today. As such, we urge the committee to adopt a resolution in favor of establishing Indigenous Peoples' Day as an act towards eliminating racial discrimination in all its forms and promoting understanding among all races without delay. And, uh, Chair, if you have a, another question regarding, um, statistics, I have another, a survey that, that counterpoints the-
Well, I should just run through that right quick.
So very quickly, Huffington Post, Huffington Post also conducted a poll in which fifty-six percent of Americans viewed Columbus favorably, but just forty-one percent think that they, he should have his own federal holiday, while thirty-eight percent say that we shouldn't celebrate Columbus Day at all. But there's a interesting, uh, issue here in that only thirteen percent of people employed full-time and eighteen percent of people employed part-time say they get Columbus Day off. So those workers- So those workers that enjoy a three-day weekend are more likely than not to say, "Let's keep the holiday." Some people point out that, so then what do Native Americans believe? Well, the reality is that the majority of Native Americans have already spoken on the issue. The survey goes on to say that, "Asked who deserves the most credit for discovering America, 39% of the plurality polled named Native Americans, while only 22% named Columbus." And I can give you that source.
Thank you. Chrissy?
Again, I'm Chrissy Castro and the vice chair of the L.A. City County Indian Commission. So, you know, Columbus Day as we know it was founded in 1934, as we've heard today by the Knights of Columbus. At the time, they were looking for a hero to look up to, and they chose this man, Christopher Columbus. Now, 1934 was a time when Native people didn't have many rights, including the right to vote in many states. 1934 was a time when Jim Crow laws were still on the books, well before the civil rights movement. So we have to ask ourselves as a society today, is this the kind of hero that we want our children to look up to? As Americans, I believe we have to be better than this. Not once have I heard today anyone refute that Christopher Columbus was responsible for brutal actions, himself and his crew members. Rather, we hear rhetoric such as "he was a man of his time" and that we should celebrate his accomplishments. But I believe that that's not possible. That kind of rhetoric is antiquated. It's irresponsible and harmful to all of us as Americans, to every American, to all of our children. And it's especially harmful to indigenous peoples, with the biggest brunt of this myth of discovery being experienced by our children and our youth. Now, today, indigenous peoples suffer amongst the worst outcomes on every socioeconomic indicator you can think of: rates of poverty, high school completion, life expectancy, representation in the child welfare and criminal justice systems. Native peoples are the only group to still be treated as race-based mascots. Our nation's capital still has a football team whose name is a Native racial slur. Our young people experience suicide at three times the national average. Studies have shown that the microaggressions that our youth experience from race-based mascots and other dehumanizing messages, such as celebrating somebody who was responsible for the murder and rape of our peoples as indigenous people, such as Columbus Day, is directly related to the poor health outcomes of our children. So we can go back and change that history, and we're not asking for that.
Let me stop you for one second because I might forget.
Yep.
Could you send to the committee any documents that kind of detail what you just said?
Absolutely. The American Psychological Association has actually come out with these studies and reports, and we have others that we can provide to you.
That's what I'm, I got that. But I want the detailed study where it relates to the effect that it has on...
Yes.
Okay.
We can provide that.
Thank you.
Yes. So we can go back and change that history, and we're not asking for that. But we're asking that we're able to look at history and do something about it today. We want to recognize the truth of Christopher Columbus and the impacts that it have in our communities. We want to stand for what's right. And so we're asking that the L.A. City Council help recognize the Second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day as a first step in a larger process of reconciliation. Now, I also want to say a few words about why the Second Monday of October is significant. First, our communities have been celebrating the Second Monday in October as Indigenous Peoples' Day as a form of reclaiming that day for decades. So that day, that Second Monday of October, is not a new day for us to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. Two, replacing the day addresses a great wound that occurred in history. In order to heal from that womb, we as a country must recognize it, address it, and seek to right the wrong. And three, we are working hard to counter the negative messages that our children receive on that day. We think it's important that that message is countered with a message of celebration, of love, of unity, of hope, that their culture is important and that they matter, their lives matter. Martin Luther King Jr. said that "The arc of the moral universe is long, but it bends towards justice." We have an opportunity to stand for justice today. Our arc as indigenous peoples has been long. This righting of this historic wrong is long overdue, and today that we ask that the city of Los Angeles stand on the right side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. So I have, I have a couple of quick questions. The holiday, and I'm assuming you were referring to the last, the one in September. And you said that really doesn't recognize indigenous people. Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, to my knowledge, that holiday recognizes specifically California Indians, which ought to be. I mean, frankly, if you look at the history of California Indians, as Rudy has told you in his personal testimony, it's inconceivable how anybody survived California. The imposition of the, I mean, the California Bar Association has a complete legal record of it on their own website, which I think is pretty thorough. But it's inconceivable to think that somebody can just walk up to your child, take them, turn them into a slave as a child in Los Angeles, California, which is exactly what Christopher Columbus wrote about to his nanny as he was running back, getting arrested to sent back to Spain, taking eight- to nine-year-old children as sex slaves. And that happening here in Los Angeles. It's inconceivable to see. And so that tremendous history, of course, deserves its own recognition.
Gotcha. Now, another thing where it relates to, in the event that the day that is now recognized as Columbus Day, if that was eliminated and it was All Immigrants' Day or something like that, what problem do you have with that? Or, you know, maybe just, I want to...
Well, for example, you know, one, it's solely on immigrants, as I said earlier.
I missed that.
It's solely on immigrants. As far as people here, Gaberlino, Fernandino, Otaviam, we're not viewed as immigrants. I mean, we're...
Okay. Then let me cut it off. I didn't, I would, I should have said more. So you would have Immigrants' Day, and then another day would be Indigenous People's Day. So you would wind up with a holiday recognizing indigenous people. So that's one part of it. So now I'm curious about if one were to take what is now Columbus Day and change it to All Immigrants' Day.
I would still say, the one that I offered earlier, if you wanted to look for something else, the Day of the People, that's what some of the countries down south of the Americas are...
Yeah, I do like that. I want to find out more.
Can I also say a word about that?
No, I'm gonna come back. I'm gonna, I want to let, I want, and I know everybody's, but I just wanted to get your feel. So I want to quickly get yours and have a couple more questions. And in fact, yeah, let's do yours. And then I want to ask you just, I'm curious.
So I think the challenge with changing Columbus Day to All Immigrants' Day is that we, our children and our communities, still, all of our, the national holiday is still Columbus Day on that day, right? So we're trying to counter the negative messages of celebrating somebody with the history that Christopher Columbus has. If we change it to All Immigrants' Day, it's going to seem like a coded word for still celebrating Christopher Columbus.
What about Day of the People?
So, Day of the People, I mean, what we're trying to do is to recognize the historic wrong that happened to indigenous peoples.
So you do that. Again, and like I said, I'm going to ask some questions that may not be comfortable, but I just want to ask them.
Mm-hmm, please.
But if you eliminate Columbus Day, I mean, I think that that rightes the perceived wrong. No? No, wait, wait, but I want to stay here. No?
It's part of it because, you know, since 1934, this figure of Christopher Columbus has been celebrated. And so we're seeking to have reconciliation for that wrong. Christopher Columbus as a holiday should never have been founded in the first place. It was founded because I'm sure no Native Americans were consulted in that process of coming up with that holiday. At the time, we had no rights. We were not organized. There was, I can go into a lot of various federal policies that sought to really assimilate and destroy our culture, to destroy our people. And so what we're saying is that we need to replace that day because this is about truth and reconciliation in this country. You yourself are spearheading an effort in the city of L.A. around Embrace L.A. to have these difficult conversations about race. And we see all over the country that we are at a time where we need to confront our history and our past. This is about race equity, and this is about justice. And we feel, you know, I'm actually here with the coalition of organizations that strongly feel that the day needs to be replaced in order to have that reconciliation.
Okay. Well, like I said, that's what, you know, this whole series of hearings is about. It is our serious conversation, even though sometimes it's uncomfortable, you know. But it's, I think that that helps give authenticity to what ultimately everybody is, you know, trying to come at a place where we can all agree, if that's at all possible.
I just, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to jump in on this questioning, and I'll press you a little bit because we're friends. So hopefully, you'll take this as a helpful question. So there is Columbus Day, and there is the, I feel like I hear your articulation that, like, this was a specific wrong, this specific wrong needs to be undone. Then what do we do about, say, the Fourth of July, which is the actual incorporation of the United States as a holiday? I just, I'm trying to get a sense for the general action of colonialists in the Americas versus Columbus as a specific character.
So that's where we differentiate the holidays. You could have an argument for Presidents' Day, you know, some of the presidents, right? So we're saying that Christopher Columbus Day is the only day that talks about the celebration of somebody who has factually, I mean, these are hard things to say, so I'm sorry, but he was a murderer, he was a rapist, he was a slave trader. He was involved around sexual, slave trading of nine- and 10-year-old girls. And this is not from a revisionist history. These are from the writings of Christopher Columbus, and these are writings from his crew. So this is not fabricated history. And we're saying that Christopher Columbus Day is the only day that celebrates a figure of a specific person versus any other holiday.
You know, you, I can really relate to some of the things that you said where it relates to, you know, you may not want to deal with color, but that you love culture. I feel exactly that same way. And then you went on to say that names were replaced and Spanish names given. Of course, I can relate to that as well, even though I don't have the blessing that you had to be able to talk to your ancestors to take you back to the beginning. I can only go so far, which is one of the biggest regrets for me. But give me an example of what the names used to be like before they were forced.
You know, I went to the San Gabriel Mission to see the old church. And there was a wall above the baptismal fountain, and it had probably about 60 names that were Native names. And I was excited about that, and I didn't write them down. And I went back, and they were gone. They whitewashed it, they painted it. And so I know that history exists someplace in the records, but I have no knowledge of our names, our original names.
I've got a, we're going to have more hearings, but I do have other people that have come that want to speak. So I want to give you an opportunity to speak, and then I'm going to kind of wrap this up. But I do want to, don't go anywhere.
May I speak to the point on the day in Latin America?
Go ahead.
So just to add clarity to that question of how Columbus's legacy is dealt with in October 12th, Latin America has a different racial construct than the United States does. The majority of the people in Latin America are still indigenous. And so when a reference is made to the people, you're talking about the indigenous peoples in the country. So in the United States, it's not exactly analogous to say, "Well, let's just say it's the people," because it's, there's different people here. It's just the reality of the United States is that at least 50% of them are white from Europe. And so it doesn't speak to the exact same social and demographic reality. So in Latin America, there is no Columbus Day. There's no country that celebrates Columbus Day outside of the United States. It isn't even celebrated in Italy or Spain. But what does exist is called Dia de la Raza, and the translation of Dia de la Raza in Latin America is the Day of the People, the Day of the Common People, is what it means. And so it isn't, it wouldn't be right to say, "Well, let's just have Dia de la Raza in Los Angeles," even though maybe some of my brothers and sisters from Latin America may want that as an option. It's not right. It's not, doesn't recognize indigenous people specifically, which it does in Latin America. So just to speak to that, there is some context here in the United States that's addressed differently.
That's fair.
Thank you.
So what did I do? Grabbed the wrong stack of cards. Okay, so do I have an Assad? Please come forward. And I have, Marcos, I don't even know where to begin. Yeah, well, that's, so maybe somebody can share, hold your thought that with me.
So this is Awisod Ishkawapili.
And so I'm going to ask, when he or she comes up, what the Spanish name, what that replacement was. I mean, wow. It's just, I'm just soaking all of this in. It's, it's...
And towards that end, I would recall Chief Yaana Vera Rocha, whose Gaberlino Tongwa name was Yaana in her language, who passed away about 10 years ago now.
Yes, sir.
Assad Baker, Advancement Project. Advancement Project supports Council File 15-1343, which would establish Indigenous Peoples' Day as a legal holiday in the city of Los Angeles. The city is home to one of the largest urban indigenous populations in the United States. The council not only has the opportunity, but the responsibility to stand on the right side of history. In light of a country's recent political climate, recognizing the atrocities committed against indigenous peoples is an important step towards a larger movement for racial equity and healing. Advancement Project is a multiracial civil rights organization working to foster greater opportunity in communities most impacted by economic and racial injustice. We partner with community-based organizations, foundations, and policymakers to lead research and advocacy efforts that champion social equity. According to the Pew Research Center, Columbus Day is one of the least consistently celebrated holidays in the United States. As one of 10 federal holidays, federal employees are excused from work. However, only 23 states recognize Columbus Day as a paid holiday. In recent years, both the states of Seattle and Minneapolis have transitioned to celebrating Indigenous People's Day instead. Advancement Project encourages you to take a strong position of support for this historic legislation, and respectfully request that you reach out to your colleagues in the Los Angeles City Council to adopt Indigenous Peoples' Day as a legal city holiday to be recognized and celebrated on the Second Monday of October, thus replacing Columbus Day in the city of Los Angeles. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. And then after the next speaker, I think it's Lydia Ponse. Yes?
Hello, my name is Awisod Ishkawapili. I am representing Semes Community Schools. And I'm just here to...
Now, let me ask you. Is that, what's on your birth certificate?
That name.
Is it?
Yeah.
So your parents made sure. Go ahead.
I'm here to abolish Columbus Day, and hopefully, you could recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I think we would use Indigenous Peoples' Day to educate people, like you said, how you weren't...
Relax. It's okay. It's fine. You're doing great.
That you didn't have the privilege to hear from your, from your parents and how you came here. So I think we would use Indigenous Peoples' Day to educate the uneducated, so thank you.
No, thank you, okay? Thank you. And I'm looking for Christopher Garcia. And then I have another one of the names where it says student slash child. I'll have Marcos help me with that in a minute. And a Milan Green. Yes, identify yourself.
Lydia Ponse Mayo Butterfly Clan Ketchua Scottish. Thank you Gloria Cat and Rudy for allowing me to be on your land and to speak before you, Mr. Hrubeusen and the committee. Papers, this is a land where papers rule. Um, here we are with the sticker, visitor, on the land that's Indigenous. Um, that's an example of colonialism, and the other is the alternative, the word used alternative, which is alternative. It should end here, alternative, alternative, there is no more alternatives. There are people, like the young child who spoke before me, who are reclaiming with their proper name. I myself, at fifty-five years old, am going to change my name from Ponse, Ponse de Leon. I have my coat of arms, and even if we found the Fountain of, of Youth, I wouldn't be honored by the atrocities he did. I'm, I'm shedding that name, sir. So with that, we want to talk about the affordability of changing this, this holiday. We cannot continue with the affordable oppression or the affordable genocide that this country has had. Please help us reconcile and heal with our tra, with our trauma, our historical trauma. As a fifty-five-year-old woman, I, I, I would be happy and blessed to celebrate next October, Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Thank you.
It would be wonderful, thank you, sir, and especially in glorious time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Even though if I could get a little bit of that Ponse de Leon juice, I'd take a sip, right? I have to be honest, I, I'd be honest with you, I, I would take, especially when I wake up in the morning, I'd, I'd know I'd take a sip. Yes?
Good morning, my name is, um...
Relax.
Okay. Good morning, my name is Kwakli, and I am from Awakamek, Awakamekac School, and I represent, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day. That's it.
That's, and that's, that's powerful, very powerful what you just did. It's okay, you're gonna be fine, yes, ma'am?
I am Malan Green, and I'm from SMIAS Community Schools. I think we should abolish Columbus Day and recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day to not honor, not just to honor our, and celebrate our, our culture, but to honor our ancestors. Thank you.
Thank you. So, did any, I call anybody else that hasn't come up yet, or I just missed it? So now I'm looking for, is it, uh, Danielle? Yeah, come on, I'm looking for, well, hold tight though, dear, I'm looking for Danielle Malanelli Perez, yes, ma'am, young lady?
Panorte Nahano Tokashaykatsi, good morning, my name is Ashaykatsi. I think that we shouldn't celebrate Columbus because he hurt so many people physically and emotionally, and he spread so many diseases. Instead, we should celebrate the Indigenous people that are still here. Please vote for Indigenous Peoples' Day and abolish Columbus Day, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Did, did you drive here today? Because I want to see your driver's license, yes?
Um, hi, my name's Danielle Baptista, and I am here...
I missed that.
My name is Danielle Baptista, and I am here from, I attend SMIAS Community Schools, and I am here in support of Indigenous Peoples' Day, and also to abolish Columbus Day, thank you.
Thank you, next?
Hi, my name is Malinali Perez, and I'm here to support the school, because I really like going to the school, and I really hope, um, that we can make it Indigenous Day, and, um, I came here to support also the running club. We came running over here, and it was kind of hard, but we still made it, and I really hope we could abolish, um, Indigenous Day, I mean Columbus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Six miles. Okay, who is, else has signed up to speak? Okay, I want Ms. Ruiz, you come. Because some of the names are getting a tad challenging for me, so I'm gonna have you guys come forward, so I don't butcher your name. Yes, this name I can do.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council Members, my name is Cynthia Ruiz, and I'm happy to say that I'm not new to this room, I used to sit in that seat.
You did.
I served the city for many years. So I am proud to say that I'm bicultural, I'm Latina, and I'm a registered member of the Cherokee Nation. The Cherokee Nation, and I really take offense when people say Columbus discovered the New World, it was not new to my people. Uh, my people actually, um, were in the South, they took, they, uh, their land spanned over eight states, what we consider now the South, the Tennessee, the Carolinas, and, um, and Georgia, and what ended up happening is through the tale of, Trail of Tears in eighteen thirty-eight, we were forcibly relocated to Oklahoma. Today, our nation has three hundred and fifty tribal members under the direction of our principal chief. And so I am here to support Indigenous Peoples' Day, because it was not a New World, it was our world. And so we're asking you to right a wrong. And I know this sounds very harsh, but it would, to me, when you're asking me to celebrate Columbus Day, that would be like asking you to celebrate the first captain that brought slaves over to the United States, because that changed history for us. And I have actually, uh, on my zip drive, all the treaties that were made by the United States and the Cherokee Nation, and as we all know, there was a lot of broken promises. So I'm asking you to do the right thing and correct the wrongs, and I know that the city of Los Angeles is always at the forefront of doing the right thing, so for my ancestors, I'm asking you to do the right thing, thank you.
Thank you, and again, congratulations, congratulations on your son's wedding, I think it was, was it, yeah? Okay, please come forward and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Melissa Salvatore Alcala, I'm a fourth-generation Italian-American, and also an enrolled member of the Navajo Nation. I'm also lucky, blessed, to be a high school English teacher, I'm a mother to a vivacious two-year-old, and one on the way. Um, as an educator, the curriculum is very biased and one-sided. Um, I strive to ensure that students read articles and texts that encompass, encompass both sides of history, the truth and the ugly truth. However, it is extremely difficult to maintain this balance when our city celebrates the history of a man, which my students read and analyze, um, have brutally, you know, um, engaged in slavery and murder, murdering, um, it's hard when children ask me, Ms. Alcala, why do we celebrate a man who was the ultimate bully? And, and that's an answer that I, I don't have for them. Um, so our children need a narrative that supports these wrongs by having a day to celebrate their ancestors, to let them know bullying is wrong, that celebrates their cultures, their people, their history, their language. Um, so I come to you not as an, as an educator, but also as a mother, to, to just right this wrong, um, for the future of our children.
And that was Melissa, right?
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. And if anybody else, get behind him now, identify yourself.
Hi, good afternoon, my name is Arthur Gomanes, I'm a parent of three, um, and I work, uh, with a couple of nonprofits in the area. I know you're gonna, you're gonna have a lot of examples, and a lot of data, and a lot of things thrown at you, I'm gonna share my personal story. My ten-year-old daughter come, comes home and asks, why? She's just like me, she asks why for everything. So, when we see on our calendar, it says Columbus Day, or it says Thanksgiving Day, and she asks, why do we have that, why do we celebrate that? And I have to go into our people's history, you know, my family is Mexican, we have, um, Native Americans in our family as well, and to share that history, to, to answer those real questions, when she has, everyone has one of these in their, in their pocket, everyone has a computer, everyone has access to the true history, we talked about, these aren't debated facts. So when I'm trying to answer her, I can't lie to her, if she's gonna be in school, and the teachers, the textbooks, everybody's lying to her, why does she want to continue? You know, we need to tell the truth, we need to speak truth to our children, and we need to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, thank you.
Thank you. So next?
Hi, I'm Angela Mooney DRC, I'm from the Ahashaman Nation, One Inno Band of Mission Indians.
Angela Mooney?
DRC.
I got you, go ahead.
Uh, and I'm the Executive Director and Founder of Sacred Places Institute for Indigenous Peoples. I want to talk about three words, responsibility, justice, and opportunity, because I really think that's what this boils down to. Responsibility, and thank you to all the panelists, amazing, and, and traumatizing at the same time, to hear again this painful history relived. You all here, in, as elected officials, have a responsibility. We know the actual history that's happened, that's been undisputed, as many people have mentioned. The history is the history, the facts are the facts. There's a responsibility in a place like Los Angeles, that's so visible, um, in the public eye, to bring about justice, and so I would look at this as an opportunity. It is necessary to abolish Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day. To do anything different than that is to allow for the continued erasure and the continued perpetuation of settler colonialism, thank you.
Thank you, next? Identify yourself, please.
Victoria Gemel.
Keep going, I don't see you, but, uh, I'm sure you're somewhere. Go ahead.
I'm, uh, Pitt River, Wintu, and Yana, and Athabaskan Nations, and I'm here, I brought my children with me, so that there's an understanding of who these decisions really impact long-term. And I wanted to also put my support with replacing Columbus Day with Indigenous Peoples' Day. Us Indigenous people here, we walk with the sacrifices of our ancestors in everything we do, and we have an obligation to them to fight these systems of oppression and erasure of our people. We need to stop uplifting murderers and rapists in our history books and statues, and celebrating holidays around them. And so I just wanted to come here and add that. I've been here a few times, I don't know how many times we have to meet before this gets changed, but many of us have come here and sacrificed to be here.
And I'm glad that you did.
Thank you, have a good day.
And, and he wanted to eliminate the microphone.
Yeah. And to be talking.
And you successfully kept him from doing that, but he was determined.
Thank you for your support, and thank you for hearing us.
Yes, come forward.
Good afternoon, my name is Diego Santana Perez. I am...
I got you.
Okay. I am Sapoltec, and I am here on behalf of my school and my running group, the Anawakamekac Sawing Eagles, uh, who ran ten miles this morning to get here.
Is that the group over there?
Yes.
I can't even smell, if I, if I tried to spell ten miles, I'd pass out. Go ahead.
Although our, our run today was challenging, it is nothing that our people, nothing compared to what our people have gone through, and today we ran in, in prayer, as a delegation to let the city of Los Angeles know that it is time for Indigenous people that are to be recognized and honored as the passing of Indigenous Peoples' Day would be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, and you guys keep on running, it's very healthy. Yes, please come and identify yourself.
Good afternoon, my name is Andrea Olmos, I am up here to represent my school, Anawakamekac, along with the Anawakamekac Sawing Eagles, to show our support in putting an end to Columbus Day and commence honoring our fallen people. There are places in Latin America, for example, Italy, that does not celebrate Columbus Day, but instead Dia de la Raza, which means Day of the Race. Therefore, it wouldn't make any sense for us to celebrate the Italian explorer's enslavement and mass murderers of thousands of Native and Indigenous groups he encountered during his voyage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Afternoon, I'm Zion Rodriguez Aceves, and, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I don't want to say a clear example, but I, I feel like, no, not I feel, um, like, I, what you were touching on about how you lost your name, right? I really felt connected to that, so, my name is Zion Rodriguez Aceves, and that's like the most Spanish you could get, I'm sorry, but that's the most Spanish last name you could get. And, uh, two months ago, I think, I just received my Nawa name, so my Nawa name is Chikome Squintle, and you know, I'm proud, walking, um, I, I'm, I'm proud of that, holding that name now, knowing that I can evolve from, uh, brainwashed Spanish culture to being able to connect to my Indigenous people again. You know, it's not everybody something, everybody somebody could, every, it's not everything, no.
You're doing fine.
Sorry, it's not a chance that everybody has to do that, and you know...
Keep going.
Um, well, you know, that's what I pretty much...
How old are you?
I am thirteen, I mean fourteen.
All right.
Fourteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did I not call on, is there anyone else? Okay, public comment is closed. Uh, I want to wrap this up by doing a couple of things, thanking all of you for coming. Uh, we will be doing this again, I wanted to get something, I wanted to do something prior to the new year. Uh, you've given Mr. Harris Dawson and I a lot to think about, we've made some requests to the city departments to review some data, I really want to see the, uh, the, the documentation that you referenced, that you're going to send. Uh, I want to thank, uh, the Knights of Columbus, and I want to thank you, um, I, I think it was, I think it was you. I believe that the winds in this country blow from the west to the east, and I believe that we in Los Angeles have a responsibility to the rest of this country. And if, 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 if I say things like I say all the time, that in Los Angeles, we don't judge people based on the color of their skin, we judge people based on their deeds and their actions, and in Los Angeles, we don't care what religion you practice, we just hope that you practice, and in Los Angeles, we don't care who you love or how you love, the only thing we care about is that you love. And that in Los Angeles, when we look into a crowd, and it's not a diverse crowd, we think something is wrong. So that's who we, that's who we are. We are a city where seventy-eight percent of the residents voted to reach in their own pocket to pay to build housing for people that are living on the streets. So, I say that to say that I'm gonna be very sensitive going forward to all points of views. And at the end of the day, I would hope that this committee would recommend to the full body something that represents Los Angeles. So with that said, this hearing is closed. Or adjourned.